Railroad meeting number 38 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the national amp.
We come to you this evening for another session of Columbus City Council, Lord. All of us join the members of council and humbly asking your guidance and inspiration as they address the needs, desires, and aspirations of the citizens of our city. In these difficult days of summer, the members of council and all of us join our prayer and concern for all of the people in our city and throughout our nation who are suffering because of the heat, as well as those who have been displaced by storms and power outages. May our government and people of goodwill join together to give relief to the suffering, shelter to those who have temporarily or permanently lost their homes in storms or fires, and those whose livelihoods have been affected by the inclement weather. We ask you, Lord God, to stir and arouse the conscience of our citizenry to come to the aid of those who suffer at this time. As we prepare to celebrate the anniversary of our nation's independence this coming Thursday, may we rededicate ourselves to the noble principles that motivated our ancestors when they took the risk to establish our nation. May God bless America and make her with our cooperation and assistance a place where there is indeed liberty and justice for all. In all things, Lord God, we look to you for your guidance and your direction. May we respond to those in need with the generosity and kindness that represents the very best impulses of the citizens of our city, so that the needs of all can be met and their suffering alleviated. Amen.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal?
So move.
Sarah Second. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not this time.
Thank you. I think just to start off this evening, I'd like to wish two very special people a happy birthday, both council member Craig and Nancy Sully in council member Paley's office, both turned 39 today.
I know you're right.
And I want to wish them a very happy birthday. Any other announcements or resolutions from members of council? Council member Craig.
President Ginther, I do have an announcement. I was waiting to see if Rick Isbell, our vengeance administrator, and Major Steve Snyder Hill, I don't see them quite yet, if I could come back in the rotation, sir.
No problem. Council member Klein?
Thank you, President Ginther. I do have one resolution tonight. It's 124X 2013, and I'd like to invite Nanette Macy Junis and Jeffrey Tucker and Sarah Rogers, Cindy Foley, and Jay Voorhees, I think is the guest list, if everyone wants to come up, please join them, to honor and recognize the Columbus Museum of Art as a recipient of the 2013 National Medal for Museum and Library Science. What a terrific honor for the museum, Nanette. So please, the podium's yours.
Well, we are thrilled to be here in front of you and to be the this year's IMLS winning museum. This is something that is incredible for the museum, but I think incredible for the city of Columbus. We are only the 16th art museum ever to win this award, and by winning it, Columbus, Ohio becomes the only the 11th city to have an IMLS winning library and an IMLS winning museum. So we are very, very proud. I do appear here with Cindy Foley, who is our Director of Education. I must tell you that this award is about community service. It's about transformational work in your community. In our application, this is the first time we ever competed, we were shocked to have been a finalist, and when we won, we were just, we couldn't believe it. But we talked about our Alzheimer and dementia program, sparking imaginations, and we talked about our Art Lab program, as well as our fifth grade program, a lot of the programs in the community with which we serve our community. And this is Jeffrey Tucker from our Art Lab program. And Jeffrey and Cindy and I were the three people, along with Peggy Walter from our board, who went to Washington to receive this honor. You actually receive it from the First Lady. You're there in the east wing. It is an extraordinary moment, and we were really, really proud to be there with Jeffrey because we believe, and Jeffrey tells us this, so we know, Jeffrey tells us that we helped transform his life. We met him as a junior in Columbus City Schools, and then he is now at Columbus State, headed on his way, after he graduates from Columbus State, to Ohio State. And he says that getting to know the museum, which he now calls his second home, has changed the entire trajectory of his life, and that's the reason that we got this award. I also come here with Jay Voorhees, who is our Board President, and our Deputy Director, Sarah Rogers. It takes an entire team of people to achieve what we have, and I could not be more thankful to the support that our city gives us. You make this possible as well, so I hope we've made you proud because we're just bursting at the seams. I don't know if Mr. Voorhees wants to say something as the Board President?
I have no planned remarks, other than to say that I am not a person who is passionate about art, but I am passionate about these people, particularly this woman, Nanette Macy Junis, the best executive director in the country, and I couldn't be more proud of our institution and what it's accomplished.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman.
I would actually like, if it's okay for Mr. Tucker, just maybe talk about your story, how you got involved with the museum, because it's certainly, what Ms. Macy Junis described is a very compelling story. I'd love to hear it.
Well, y'all look fancy, by the way. I was just admiring you. But it all started in my junior high school. I went to Columbus Alternative High School, where they have an internship. So I started internship there at junior high school. At first, I didn't know if I'll fit in. At first, because the museum, I expect the place to be like, you know, like your pinkies of and stuff like that, but I really loved it. I came back as like a mentor, volunteer, intern, and I didn't think it would pay off, you know, the way it did, the way it did. I just did it for the fun of it. So yeah, like, it's just, yeah, it's really cool. That's like my little story, and now I'm here with you.
Very good. I wish you the best success, and I have no doubt with your passion and your vibrant personality that just in meeting you in the 30 seconds here, that you're going to have a lot of success in your life. Any questions? Councilmember Paley?
I'm with you. I didn't go to the art museum either, because I didn't want to use my pinky either. And I actually wasn't a huge art enthusiast until I got involved with the art museum. And I have to tell you, for those that haven't been there, there's so much there, not just for individual quote-unquote "art enthusiasts," but for families, for children, for everyone. And I love the middle room, I forget what you call it, the wonder room, for families to experience different things. And I think I've seen almost every exhibit since, you know, I started on city council and started to get interested in the art museum. And I used to joke about it being the number one art museum in the country, and now, you know, like, okay, we have the best co-si, we have the best zoo, and now we can say, you know, that we're the gold medal art museum. So thank you, Nanette, for all that you've done for that art museum, which is incredible. Thank you.
Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you, Chairman Klein. Just congratulations to Nanette and the whole team there. But just, I think it's so important that the city of Columbus certainly does invest in the Columbus Museum of Art through GCAC, as well as certainly the capital improvement investments outside of the museum. But what I want to really focus really on is that we always are talking about the nonprofits that we support and all the art organizations that the city supports through GCAC, and that the outreach that they do in our community. And so just listening to Jeffrey's story, we know that the art museum is a great place to see unbelievable art from some fantastic artists, but certainly, there's a role in the community that the museum plays. And Jeffrey is really a standing testament of what can happen at the museum. And to say that you were a young man that didn't know that this is a place for you to go, and now how it has changed your life, that you are continuing to move forward with not only your educational career, you've had the opportunity to go to the White House and meet the First Lady, but how it has changed your life, and that's what we really want to see happen within our library, from art to now your life being changed in such a tremendous way. And that is why our investment in the arts is so important, because of people like you standing here and sharing your story. So congratulations to you as you continue to move forward with your life, but also congratulations for these great people that continue to make this a great place for young people to come to. Congratulations, everyone. Thank you, Chairman Klein.
Councilmember Craig?
Thanks very much, Chairman Klein. I want to certainly lend my hearty support. You know, the thing that I'm always impressed by is the enthusiasm of Nanette. I think anybody that knows her, you know, and I think really it's the, not just simply the arts, which is critical, it's major, and we support that, but it really is about people with families and children. And I think this is an environment in the museum that's open to all, across social-economic lines, all of those isms, to come to the museum and really enjoy and grow, and it's an environment that really encourages all to be better. And so Jeffrey, we congratulate you. I haven't shaken the First Lady's hand, so good for you.
I haven't watched it yet.
You got two hugs, come on.
And you got a hug, too?
Two hugs.
Well, good for you. Congratulations, and I mean that sincerely. This is an extraordinary achievement for the city of Columbus and our nation.
Any other questions or comments?
Once you go art, you can't go apart.
With those final comments, I first request to remove it from the table.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
That's all I have, Council President. President Pro Tem Miller? Councilmember Mills? Councilmember Paley?
Yes, today I have one resolution to recognize the 30th Annual Duda Parade. If Deb Roberts and Charlie want to come forward, why, I read. Whereas the Columbus Duda Parade is the annual parade that takes place each July 4th in the short north of Victorian Village neighborhood of Columbus. And the Duda Parade began in 1983 as a small, disorganized march down the sidewalks of High Street in the short north by regulars of the Short North Tavern. Every July 4th, the Duda Parade features vibrant people marching and expressing unique humorous thoughts about social, political, civic, and other issues. And the Duda Parade is funded by charitable donations and is produced by a nonprofit 501(c)(3) charity based solely on volunteers. And this year, the Columbus Duda Parade celebrates its 30th anniversary of once again celebrating liberty and lunacy. And therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Columbus that this council hereby recognizes and celebrates the 30th Annual Duda Parade and commends it's past three decades of providing ambivalence and entertainment within the community. And now, Ms. Duda, as we all know her, Deb Roberts.
Thank you, Council Lady Paley, and Mr. President. Council ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. It seems kind of unethical that we're receiving such a high honor for the Duda Parade because it's about political satire, and I'm sure that some of you marched in, and I've seen quite a few faces there with the funny hats on, because if you are a politician, you're always welcome to be in the Duda Parade, but you must wear a funny hat. And I felt like I'm at the Academy Awards, with all the people on the agenda getting awards tonight, wow. And today was the rain date, we changed it today. We got it out of the way, and we appreciate this very much. Thank you.
So you want to tell everyone who's watching what time the Duda Parade is and where it goes?
Sure. I didn't realize we're on TV. I guess 1 o'clock, 1 o'clock on July 4th. Lineups at noon on Park Street, and it's a blast. Come out and have some fun. It's free to be in it, free to watch it.
Any other comments or questions? If not, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you very much.
I have one more announcement. I want to introduce Ms. Chandler Helms, who is the summer intern in my office. Chandler, please stand up and be recognized. In the fall, Chandler will be a senior, and Chandler is also a member of the AAU basketball team, the Central Ohio Score More Athletic Club, and she will be spending time competing in a tournament this week in Kentucky. Good luck, Chandler. Thank you. And I have nothing else. President Ginther?
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. Councilmember Tyson?
Yes, I have one resolution. It's Resolution 0165X, that's 2013, and I am going to ask for Linda Logan and Val Belmonte to start walking towards the podium. And this resolution is to celebrate the 2013 USA Fencing National Championship, taking place at the Greater Columbus Convention Center from June 28th through July the 7th. Whereas USA's fencing 2013 National Championships and July North America Cup is the largest fencing tournament with nearly 4,000 athletes and 400 teams that will compete with athletes ranging in age from nine to 90 years old for this 10-day tournament. Whereas the Greater Columbus Sports Commission and the USA Fencing have worked to host this event that will generate more than $5 million in business revenue for the city of Columbus and over 9,000 hotel stays. Whereas 10,000 competitors, family members, and fans traveling to Columbus for this marquee event that will include individual and team competitions in all three weapons, all three weapons, EP, foil, and saber. And whereas Columbus, home of the 2012 NCAA Fencing National Champions, is on target to become the United States fencing capital of the country by hosting USA Fencing Championship and the 2014 and 15 NCAA Fencing National Championships. And whereas USA Fencing, an organization that boasts more than 20,000 members, whose mission is to serve and foster the growth, participation, and development of domestic fencing at all levels to achieve sustained international success, will award more than 700 medals. And whereas this competition will begin daily June 28 through the 7th at the Greater Columbus Convention Center, and is free and open to the public. Now, therefore, be it resolved by this council of the city of Columbus, that this council does hereby honor and recognize the 2013 USA Fencing's 2013 National Championship and July North American Cup. I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Linda, if you're going to speak first or Val?
Yes, thank you so much for this honor. We are thrilled to partner with USA Fencing to host this national championship, the largest in the world, and I hope that you all can come out this week through Sunday. Admission is free from 8 to 8 p.m. every day at the convention center. So I'd like Val Belmonte, the CEO of USA Fencing, to say a few words.
Thank you, Linda. Mr. President, council members, thank you very much for this honor. It's a thrill for us to be here in the city of Columbus. What Linda Logan and her team has done for this tournament is beyond words. She and her staff has done a terrific job, helped collaborate with the volunteers. Not only do we have over 4,000 fencers, we're going to have over 10,000 bouts throughout the week. And this is the beginning of our quad that will bring us up to Rio for the 2016 game. So we're very proud to be here. We're very proud to be in the city. You've done a tremendous job. You opened up your arms to our fans, to our membership, to our athletes, to our coaches, and we're really looking forward to the remaining part of our stay here. So again, thank you very much for this honor.
Thank you so much.
Yes, the tournament runs from 8 a.m. to 8 p.m. daily through Sunday, and again, all age groups and three different weapons, and open to the public for free. Okay? All right, thank you all.
Councilmember Klein, you had a guest that you wanted to report?
Thank you. I know the council, I think council member Craig may also have something, but I appreciate you coming to me. Due to a scheduling issue, I wanted to invite Al Bertold up. Later on in the agenda, we have 1398 2013, which involves the Neighborhood Design Center. So Al, please, everyone with the Neighborhood Design Center can join Mr. Bertold. Thank you for coming down to council, and we're excited to hear about what you have going on at the Neighborhood Design Center.
Thank you very much. It's very nice of you to invite us. The people who are standing behind me really do the work. I kind of balance the books and try to get some more work for us, but this is our team. And I'm going to leave with you two little packages, because I know time is precious. One is a book that talks about all the different things that we've been doing recently, and the other one is for those really boring city council meetings. It's a coloring book, so you guys can sit up there and color your way through historical Columbus. I'd really like to focus on one project that we're extremely proud of. It's our streetcar that is at the corner of Nelson and Livingston, and I would like to share with you how that started. And it really started here with Councilman Craig. And the idea was to improve that part of Livingston Avenue from Ohio to Nelson with some of the kinds of infrastructure things that you see on Livingston Avenue from Parsons to Ohio. That would be crosswalks, lighting, and landscaping. We worked with public service to come up with a toolkit to revitalize this area. There was a budget, and public service kindly gave us cost data on the various things that we were going to suggest. We pulled four neighborhoods together, four civic associations, as well as the area commission, and we carefully worked through and got consensus, and we're very proud of that. What happened as part of that was that we discovered that they wanted some sort of notoriety as far as being the streetcar district. So we were able to get a $10,000 grant, and we hired, we had three artists who gave us proposals. Our subgroup selected one of them, and if you drive past there today, there it is. Also, as part of that, the Harmony Group offered to help us do landscaping on both sides of the street. So this was something that seemed very small, but really created something very large, and we're very proud of it. We actually had to rent the property from Norfolk &amp; Southern, the railway company that owns it, and we considered our branch office. So that kind of ties us to the neighborhood.
Mr. Bertold, what services do you provide the neighborhood groups, and what neighborhood groups can contact you? Who's eligible to use your services? And also, at the conclusion of answering my questions, can you maybe introduce all the fine folks that work for the Neighborhood Design Center?
Yes. We are part of the NCR program that is a commercial corridor revitalization program that has grants tied to it from the city. So we work in five corridors: Cleveland Avenue, Parsons, Main, Long, Mount Vernon, and West Broad Street, both in the Hilltop, as well as in Franklinton. And those grants are 50% matching grants, so there's a great incentive for the business owners to improve their properties. That's about a half of our funding. The other half comes from a whole series of sources. We are a United Way agency, which kind of takes us into the neighborhoods on a little bit different tact. We're there to not only do designs and leave them on the table and tell the folks, "Call us when you're done," we're there actually to implement these things. And a chunk of the work on Livingston Avenue was funded by the United Way, and our time was paid by that. Did I miss anything?
I think you touched on the majority of what I was asking. If you just could maybe introduce the folks with you.
Could I ask them to do that?
Of course.
And I would ask you to tell them what your discipline is and whether you're a student or staff. Larissa?
I'm Larissa Stauffer. I'm a student in architecture.
Kent Miller, City Regional Planning, and I'm staff.
Hi, everyone. My name's De'anie Robarge, and I recently graduated with a degree in architecture, and I'm staff.
I'm Benjamin Bosky, and I'm at Ohio State studying architecture and anthropology.
Hi, I'm Katie Alone, and I'm landscape architecture and staff.
I'm Nathaniel Carvin. I am a student at Ohio State studying landscape architecture.
Hello, I'm Torrance Abrams. I'm a student at Ohio State studying landscape architecture.
So the real trick here is to try to figure out what each of these students' talents are, because they're all extremely unique, and try to match them to the work that we have. And that's the joy of it. This is the first time many of them have ever worked with a client, and I make it very clear, it's their client. I'm not going to tell them what to design or anything. They have to talk to the people, find out what they're looking for, come up with some design concepts, have them on budget, get the work done.
Any questions or concerns or comments? Councilmember Craig?
Thank you, Chairman Klein. I just wanted to take this opportunity to say to you, it's certainly more than just bookkeeping, but your leadership, I've watched you in many community meetings, and it certainly requires one that can collaborate, that can listen to the members of our community, residents in our community. And it certainly is not hyperbole to say to all of those that are working with these businesses and communities, that in many ways, it's the survival and sustainability of these businesses when you're doing the facade work and all the other things that you're doing to change the landscape of communities. So your work is important, it's imperative, and we appreciate so much that you do for our families and our children.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you, Chairman Klein. I just want to make some comments about the young people that are working in our community. I think it's so important, as we continue to have a smart and open city, and it's how important it is that we continue to attract and retain young people, that it's critically important that young people are involved in moving our community forward. And as we're making these different, you know, with the design, and architecture, and landscape changes to our city, that we have a new, fresh, and smart look from young people. So I'm really, really excited to see all these great young people building a community for them, for their future, and making this a great place for us. So congratulations to you and your work, and congratulations to these young people changing our city. Thank you so much. Thank you, Chairman Klein.
Any other questions or concerns or comments? Well, thank you for coming down. Again, we have the piece of legislation on later in development, 1398, and I hope my colleagues consider all the terrific work that the Neighborhood Design Center does. It provides an invaluable service to many of our economically disadvantaged, commercial- districts that really can be on the precipice of turnaround with facade improvements and the design work that you all do. So, as we get to consideration of 1398-2013, I hope that everyone takes that into consideration, and we are able to give you the additional funding to continue the work that these fine folks are doing at the Neighborhood Design Center for our community. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, President Ginther, for letting me come back to that.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. Councilmember Craig?
Thank you very much, President Ginther, for your indulgence and my colleagues. But I have the distinct privilege, and I'll be moving quickly through this. I'd like Rick Isbell, our administrator of Veteran Affairs, and Major Steve Snyder-Hill, if they'll approach the podium. The Department of Defense announces the City of Columbus as the 2013 Secretary of Defense Employee Support Freedom Award. The City of Columbus is one of 15 recipients out of nearly 3,000 nominations. The Freedom Award is the Department of Defense's highest recognition, given to employers for exceptional support of Guard and Reserve employees. The 2013 recipients will be honored at the 18th Annual Secretary of Defense Employee Support Freedom Award Ceremony in Washington, DC on September the 26th, 2013. The City of Columbus was nominated by a member of the Army Reserve, Major Steve Snyder-Hill. And the city spends job opening emails, or sends job opening emails to military units and organizations to ensure guardsmen and reservists are aware of employment opportunities. Since 1996, only 175 employers have received the Freedom Award. Rick, I know that you want to share the importance of this extraordinary achievement. Please, the podium is yours.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmembers, thank you for having us here today. I was here a month ago to talk about how we took awards here in the state. We won the Above &amp; Beyond and the Proprietary Award. But to have an entire city to be nominated and to actually win the Freedom Award for our nation is a big step. Normally, it's a department or a smaller part of a city or an organization that receives this. But for an entire city to do this, this means we have buy-in from the top down. We have yourselves, we have our directors, we have a mayor that stands behind us and believes in our military people. When you're called to duty for the City of Columbus, we do more than any other person, any other organization, any other municipality in the nation to be able to be put in for this award, because we care so much for those who are called to duty. We try to take those steps so that while you're there, serving your country, you're not worrying about what's happening back here. You know your job's going to be there, you know your pay's going to be the same, and you know that we're going to take care of your family. So, these are some of the fine things that we did. We have a Veterans Committee that's come together to make sure that we keep striving to do better. We have a managers' and supervisors' manual that helps anybody who is called up to duty before, during, and after, so they can understand how to take care of our employees. And that is some of the steps that got us over the top and brought us to the forefront.
Thank you very much, Rick. We also have Major Snyder-Hill. Major?
President Ginther, Councilmembers, thank you for having me. I, you know, I'm a very, very proud soldier, and even more, I'm proud to be a City of Columbus employee. I think that the city has stepped up above &amp; beyond. When I was, first came to the city in 2003, it was the height of the Iraq War, and, you know, I was out interviewing, and it was actually a hard time to get a job, because most people knew that you would probably be deployed. The city hired me without blinking an eye, and ever since then, my experience with them has been wonderful. So, I mean, for these last 10 years, I've been told almost every year that I'm going to deploy, and, you know, the Health Department's worked with me, you know, continuously on that. While I was deployed, they were great, sending me care packages, probably more than my family did. So, you know, I just can't tell you how much that I'm proud to be a city employee and proud to be a soldier. So, I appreciate this opportunity to come and thank you all in person.
It needs to certainly be mentioned that it's throughout all of our departments where we have servicemen and women that are deployed, where I think that's why this recognition is so significant. And so, the truth is, this is the least that we can do. Sir, we honor you for your service and all of those that are serving our nation. And as Rick has rightly said, we ought not to be, you ought not to be worried about whether your family's going to be okay. This city has stepped up in a significant way to make sure that your families are secure, that you don't miss a dime, that we're taking, that we're making sure that we're covering expenses and your salaries while you're going. I know that you wanted to make additional comments, sir.
Yeah, definitely, the city has done so many things to match manager compensation with union compensation. The city and the Veterans Committee that we've done, that we've worked on, has created HR forms for, in my own personal experience, how can we improve? That's all we ever do continuously. I appreciate the mayor and all of his support with me and LGBT soldiers as well, because I can't stop telling you how much the city steps up for all of us in everything that we do. So, I'm very, like I said, very, very, very proud to be a city employee and proud to be a soldier. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Rick, do you have any additional? Yes, Ms. Tyson?
Thank you, Chairman Craig. And too, I want to say congratulations for this award to the city, to you, Rick, especially for the work that you do to support our veterans, and to you, Chairman Craig. I also want to recognize Dr. Long and her team of individuals that certainly, as you just mentioned, have always been there for you, and just really appreciate the work that you're doing on behalf of the citizens of Columbus in regards to your work at the Department of Health. And just want to say, congratulations to you, Major, just for continuing to serve this country and to be as such a leader here in the City of Columbus. So, thank you. Thank you, Rick Isbell. I want to thank the Human Resources Department, Kristi, for all the work that he's done, as well as the administration and the mayor. So, thank you so much. Congratulations.
Yes, thank you. Any additional comments? Hearing a gentleman, yes, yes.
Just one more comment. I just want to thank the mayor and his guidance, because I think that, you know, this is all under his direction, and we have his support. So, it's all started from the top down, so we just want to appreciate the mayor in this too.
Well, we certainly thank you. We're on board. I know all of my colleagues on council, President Ginther, and all of my colleagues. So, we, sir, we thank you again for your service. Congratulations, and we appreciate all that you're doing. Thank you, President Ginther. That is all that I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Craig. Are there any comments from our elected officials? City Auditor? If there aren't anything, any other comments or announcements, are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the Consent Action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Development Committee, ordinance is 1442 and 1464-2013. Technology Committee, ordinance 1289-2013. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is 1033, 1090, 1147, 1187, 1252, 1266, 1277, 1355, 1371, 1380, 1390, 1404, 1405, 1421, 1434, 1470-2013. Rules &amp; Reference Committee, ordinance 1532-2013.
Following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions, will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Resolutions of expression 0158X, 0160, and 0161X-2013. Finance Committee, ordinance is 1341, 1506, 1565-2013. Health and Human Services Committee, ordinance is 1410 and 1515-2013. Development Committee, ordinance is 1472, 1473, 1478, 1479, 1536, 1540, 1553, 1555, 1558, 1562, and 1582-2013. Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance is 1356, 1455, 1456, 1461, 1462, 1463, 1466, 1467, 1491-2013. Technology Committee, ordinance is 1339 and 1368-2013. Public Safety and Judiciary Committee, ordinance is 1215, 1259, 1260, 1340, 1423, 1441, and 1554-2013. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinance is 1379, 1475, 1477, 1492, 1493, 1513, 1518, 1534, 1535, 1539-2013. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is 1278, 1369, 1377, 1391, 1433, 1488-2013. And appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0119, 120, and 121-2013.
We do have one speaker for the consent agenda. Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, if you would come forward to the podium, you have signed up to speak in support of 1562-2013. Can you share your name, address, any organizations you represent? Sir, you have three minutes. Speak to the ordinance.
Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins, 1612 Arlington Avenue. Speaking in support of this, as the Alpha House, as 331,000, and some cent change behind it. I would just like to know what neighborhood, what block grant, and all this money will be used for, and how soon that this money will be put to good use. Thank you for your time.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Wilkins? Director Shoney, any information you can provide to council on some of those questions?
President Ginther, members of council, I don't have anything at my fingertips right now. We'll follow up with Mr. Wilkins and get him the details on that immediately.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? If not, I entertain a motion for approval of these items designated as consent actions. Is there a second? Clerk call the roll by voice.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein? Miller? Mills?
Yes, with the exception of ordinance 1565-2013, on which I am abstaining.
Paley? Tyson? President Ginther?
Councilmember Tyson, was there, do you have an extension on the consent agenda?
Yes, with the extension 1410-2013, which I'm abstaining.
I vote yes. The consent agenda carries. We will now proceed with reading a 30-day table in the emergency legislation. The first committee is the Finance Committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. Madam Chair, floor is yours.
Thank you. Tonight, we'll be introducing a total of five resolutions, which relate to the capital improvements for our community. The first resolution will accept the capital improvements program for the City of Columbus for the next five years, which also includes 2013. The next four resolutions will begin the process of asking voters to consider authorizing the city to issue up to $842 million in bonds to support a capital improvement projects ranging from safety and health, recreation and parks, streets, highways, and refuse collection, and water, storm, and electricity. The four voted bond resolutions of necessity that we will read this evening will authorize the city to present this legislation to the Franklin County Auditor's office, so they may calculate the mileage amounts associated with the 2013 voted bond package. After the Franklin County Auditor has completed his calculation, we will be voting on resolutions to proceed, which will authorize the City of Columbus to proceed with finalizing the process of placing these items on the ballot for consideration by Columbus residents. This is scheduled to happen at our July 15 council meeting. In order to qualify for the November ballot, these resolutions will need to be filed with the Franklin County Board of Elections on or before August the 7th. And finally, Columbus residents will then, will vote to consider these resolutions on November 5th of 2013. Now, you may ask, why place these bonds on the ballot? By placing these issues on the ballot, the city's asking for voter approval to issue bonds. This is done because the city receives a lower interest rate on the bonds with voter approval. Investors purchasing city bonds have more confidence that they will be repaid if voters have approved the debt issuance, and generally demand a lower interest rate. Cheaper debt allows the city to maximize its resources, resulting in more capital improvements. As a result, tax dollars are saved, and we can invest again more in our neighborhoods. And there certainly has been a public engagement process. We've had hearings, we've been out in the community, and now I'm going, hearings in the community, and now we're ready to bring these resolutions to council. And again, all these, the voted bond package, again, will not raise taxes, will not raise property taxes. And so, with that, I am going to start to read the different resolutions. The first is Resolution 0134X-2013, is to accept the capital improvements program for 2013 through 2018, as described herein as the primary guide for the capital improvements budget ordinance, and to declare an emergency. I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. The next resolution is 0135X-2013, is to declare the necessity of bond issue and to submit the question of such issue to the electors in the amount of $52,500,000 for safety and health. This legislation is offered pursuant to Section 55E of the city charter. And these bonds will be used to support police and fire facilities, vehicles, and equipment. First, I move a motion to waive second reading.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. And now I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. The next resolution is 0136X-2013, to declare the necessity of bond issue and to submit the question of such issue to the electors in the amount of $123,910,000 for recreation and parks. This legislation is offered pursuant to Section 55E of the city charter. I first move to waive second reading.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. And now I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. The next resolution is 0137X-2013, to declare the necessity of bond issue and to submit the question of such issue to the electors in the amount of $220,300,000 for streets, highways, and refuse collection. This legislation is offered pursuant to Section 55E of the city charter. I first move to waive second reading.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. And now I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. My next ordinance then is 1415-2013. Wait a second, I skipped one, I think. Wait one second. It's 138X, and it is to declare the necessity of the bond issue and to submit the question of such issue to the electors in the amount of $445,295,000 for water, storm, and electricity, Section 55E of the city charter. And I first move to waive second reading.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. And now I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Now, I would like to move to ordinance 1415-2013. It's to authorize the Finance and Management Director on behalf of the Fleet Management Division to enter into contract with Bus Service, Inc., for two 2013 Starcraft All-Star CNG-powered shuttle buses, to authorize the appropriation and the expenditure of $125,602 from the Special Income Tax Fund, and to declare any... declare an emergency. These CNG-powered buses will be used to shuttle city employees from the short-street shuttle parking to the City Hall campus. And by having the CNG-powered buses, it certainly will be a more efficient way to transport our employees. And with that, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. The next resolution is 1453-2013 to authorize and direct the City Treasurer to enter into a contract for armored car services with Brinks, Inc. to authorize expenditure of $57,000 from the various funds within the city and to waive competitive bidding and to declare an emergency. We are waiving competitive bidding because there was a, even though we bitted this contract out, only one individual responded, one company responded. But we're waiving competitive bidding because we had to make a change to the bid. Once the bid came in, it was basically, we had to add an additional pickup time. And that's why we're waiving competitive bidding. And so with that, I would move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1494-2013 to amend the 2013 capital improvement budget to authorize the City Auditor to transfer $79,806 between projects within the Construction Management Capital Improvement Fund to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into a contract on behalf of the Office of Construction Management with Dorr and Associates Contracting, Inc. for the demolition of the 109 North Front Street building to authorize expenditure of $1,677,000 from the Construction Management Capital Improvement Fund and to declare an emergency. This is for the demolition of this building, the removal of the hazardous material, and the removal and storage of the Harry E. Richter Workers' Memorial Park until its permanent replacement is determined at Batel Riverfront Park. This building demolition work will be performed in preparation for future construction on the site. And this building, as it presents stands, is functionally obsolete, suffering from a number of structural and mechanical deficiencies. The Department of Finance is currently in contract negotiation with the design of a new building at this same site, and that will come before the City Council under a separate ordinance for authorization to proceed with design. Both the Downtown Commission and the Columbus Art Commission were notified of the demolition and redevelopment of this site and have approved the building demolition and removal of the park. Additionally, Recreation and Parks Commission were notified of the removal of the park and is supportive of its removal and relocation. Additionally, the Central Ohio Labor Council, the AFL-CIO, was also notified of the park removal and the relocation and has expressed support. So with that, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. And I would now like to move to Health and Human Services. Thank you. The only ordinance in Health and Human Services is ordinance 1419-2013 to authorize the Board of Health to enter into a revenue contract with Nationwide Children's Hospital for the provision of infant mortality report services in the amount not to exceed $10,000 and to declare an emergency. Columbus Public Health has collaborated with Nationwide Children's Hospital to offer custom vital statistics reports on infant mortality using current data from the Ohio Department of Health. And certainly, this is certainly a priority of Council President Ginther and myself because we know that our infant mortality rates in Ohio and in the City of Columbus are certainly quite high compared to the nation. And we need to begin to move forward and making, having a decrease in those numbers and having more babies live past their first birthday. So with that, I move for passage. My voice.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Ginther.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Our next committee is the Development Committee. Councilmember Klein chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. First in development is 1395-2013 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into an agreement with the United Way of Central Ohio to support the Create Columbus Young Professionals Grant Program to authorize the transfer of $70,000 within the general fund and authorize the expenditure of $70,000 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. By way of background, if you recall, President Ginther, the City of Columbus has historically funded a position at the Chamber of Commerce that promoted young professional development. And under this new approach, we'll be utilizing the Create Columbus Commission and the United Way as the intermediary to determine what grants to distribute based on the needs and wants of young professionals here in the City of Columbus. I think it empowers the Create Commission as a way to provide significant feedback. These are some of the best and the brightest young professionals in the city. And to use their expertise to figure out really what's driving the young professional agenda and what can make this city even better for young professionals is going to be an added terrific benefit to the City of Columbus. We do have one speaker, Scott Peacock, who's speaking in favor of. So Mr. Peacock wants to come forward with his guests. You have three minutes to speak. If you just could identify yourself, your address, and any organizations you represent. And when you're finished, maybe introduce the distinguished guest with you.
Sure. My name is Scott Peacock, and I live at 436 Ridgedale Drive North in Worthington, and I work for Experience Columbus. Good evening, Council President Ginther, Chair Klein, and members of council. On behalf of myself and my fellow commissioners that are here with me today, including Jordan Davis of the Columbus Partnership, and Alyssa Snyder of the Mid-Ohio Food Bank, and Derek Grosso is up here as well, we just want to say thank you for your leadership and your foresight in recognizing the importance of YPs to our great city. The Create Columbus Commission has been around since 2007, and we've been helping to advocate for the YP agenda in the city since that time, mostly working indirectly to increase the attraction and retention of YPs to Columbus. But with your vote tonight, what you'll be doing is allowing us, for the first time with these new funds, to have a direct impact on the community and not only elevate the importance of the commission itself, but also elevate the young professional initiatives throughout the community. The commission's new grant program will support, grow, enable, YP-led and YP-focused initiatives throughout the community, help make Columbus the best place in the nation to live, work, and play for YPs. Our commission takes on this new responsibility with great excitement and focus at the same time. We build a comprehensive application program and selection process, as well as a marketing plan to communicate the new funding opportunities to the public. With your support this evening, we will be off and running, and our applications will actually be accepted starting next Monday, I'm sorry, Tuesday, July 8th, when our initial filing period opens to the public. Alongside our efforts to develop the grant program, we've been leveraging this opportunity to reorganize and refocus the commission to help make it the best it can be and for allow us to have the most foremost thought leaders involved in this project moving forward. This includes restructuring our commission, rewriting our bylaws, and also refocusing our efforts around the lens of the live, work, play lifestyles that we feel are most important. And that also aligns with Columbus 2020's economic development goals as well. So we look forward to leading this next phase of the community for young professionals and the strategy by being collaborative and involved in the decision-making and dialogue in this community. We plan to deepen our stakeholder relationships with the mayor and with the city council, as well as build more long-lasting partnerships with organizations such as the Chamber and Experience Columbus. Next week, we'll formally roll out our grant program and our newly restructured commission at our stakeholder meeting to Council President Ginther and Mayor Coleman. And so we strongly feel that at that time, you'll be very impressed, hopefully, with our efforts to date, and that your investment will already be paying off. So, thank you.
Thank you. I have the benefit of knowing Ms. Schneider, Ms. Davis, and Mr. Grosso very well, and I have the confidence, and obviously you too, and have the confidence that y'all will make solid decisions that will benefit and promote the City of Columbus to young professionals. Any questions or comments? Thank you. And I move for passage.
Craig?
I'm sorry. Move for passage by voice vote.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Mills?
Abstaining.
Paley?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Ginther.
1398-2013 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a contract with the Neighborhood Design Center to provide expanded services and planning activities within the NCR and CBBG service areas to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of $120,000 from the Jobs Growth Fund and to declare an emergency. I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
1495-2013 to authorize the appropriation of $2,937,500 from the 2013 Home Fund to the Department of Development to authorize the expenditure of $2,718,125 from the 2013 Home Fund to provide funding for various approved 2013 programs and to declare an emergency. I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
1516-2013 to authorize the Director of Development to enter into a jobs growth incentive agreement with Core Molding Technologies, Inc., equal to 25% of the amount of new income tax withheld on employees for a term of five years in consideration of the company's investment of not less than $5 million related to the acquisition of new machinery and equipment, the retention of 234 existing positions, and the creation of 85 new full-time permanent positions. Director Shoney, I'm going to ask if you would supply the council with a description and an update on what Core Molding Technologies is doing and why the department is seeking this particular piece of legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, President Ginther, members of council. Core Molding Technologies is a supplier of parts to the over-the-road truck industry. They make essentially the hoods and front faces for trucks for a couple of different manufacturers. Members of council may recall that the company was approved for a property tax abatement in 2006. The company did construct the real property improvements that were planned under that agreement. The company did not meet their job commitments. They came to the Department of Development, reported their underperformance. This was going into, as you'll all recall, going into the 2008 recession. They'd seen a downturn in their business. They voluntarily withdrew from the prior incentives. They did not receive any incentives under the prior agreements. They have subsequently, prior to having some reductions in force through the recession, they are coming back now. We are pleased to see them adding 85 jobs above their current level of employment. Those jobs are both shop floor production level and managerial level. We are in competition with South Carolina for this project. The company has a facility in South Carolina. This project is to service a couple of different customers, one here in Ohio and one in South Carolina. So the decision for them is where to make their investment in machinery and equipment.
Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Council President Ginther?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Director. So you mentioned the investment they made in improving the property value, which benefited their school district and the city. And they didn't seek any abatement. An abatement was initially offered as well as income tax incentives, but they chose not to seek that. So they didn't receive a tax break on property taxes, and obviously, because the jobs weren't created, nothing through income tax before. Is that correct?
Correct, President Ginther, members of council. That is correct. Southwestern City Schools is the school district in question. Based on the 2006 through 2008 investments, the Southwestern City Schools have been collecting just short of $21,000 a year on property taxes based on that project. The incentives that we're putting in place now are entirely performance-based. They will not receive the incentives unless the jobs are created and they're not tied to a capital investment. Frankly, they're able to put the machinery and equipment inside the envelope, if you will, of the building that was expanded in 2007, 2008.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Director Shoney, you mentioned that South Carolina is in competition with us over these jobs. Is it, of your opinion, or do you have any insight on whether these jobs will be created in the City of Columbus, whether or not, is it dependent on this, on this particular piece of legislation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, President Ginther, members of council. Yes, it is our opinion that this incentive is critical to the creation of these jobs. These are, this is a competitive situation.
So we would lose these jobs in South Carolina?
That is our belief, yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I'm going to recommend passage of this particular piece of legislation. It is 85 new full-time positions. And if, in the director's opinion, we could lose these jobs in South Carolina, as long as there's 85 people looking for work in the City of Columbus, I recommend that we pass this particular piece of legislation. I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
1517-2013 to authorize the Director of Development to enter into a job creation tax credit agreement of 60% for a period of seven years, with Ascena Retail Group in consideration of the company's proposed investment of $200,000 in the creation of 15 new full-time positions. This is an expansion, this is an expansion for the Ascena Retail Group Director, and it's pretty, this is a standard expansion agreement?
Mr. Chairman, President Ginther, members of council, yes. This is a standard expansion agreement for Ascena. They are the successor to the Charming Shops. They have a variety of retail brands.
Okay. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Moving on to Recreation and Parks, Council President. 1430-2013 to authorize the City Auditor to transfer $1.284 million within the voted Recreation and Parks Bond Fund 702 to amend the 2013 capital improvement budget ordinance 645-2013 to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into a contract with General Temperature Control, Inc. for the Thompson Community Center HVAC replacement project to authorize the expenditure of $2,074,000 in a contingency of $200,000 for a total of $2,274,000 from the voted Recreation and Parks Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
1469-2013 to authorize the City Auditor to transfer $1,410,000 within the voted Recreation and Parks Bond Fund 702 to amend the 2013 capital improvements budget ordinance 645-2013 to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into a contract with 2K General Company for the Big Run Athletic Complex renovation project to authorize the expenditure of $1,312,500 in a contingency of $97,500 for a total of $1,410,000 from the voted Recreation Parks Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
1487-2013 to authorize and direct the City Auditor to appropriate and transfer $1,813,132.81 from the Special Income Tax Fund to the Recreation and Parks Voted Bond Fund to authorize the City Auditor to appropriate $1,813,132.81 within the voted Recreation and Parks Bond Fund to authorize the City Auditor to transfer $3,686,867.19 within the voted Recreation and Parks Bond Fund 702 to amend the 2013 capital improvements budget ordinance 645-2013 to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into a contract with Gutenick Construction Company for Westgate Recreation Renovations Project to authorize the expenditure of $5,036,500 in a contingency of $463,500 for a total of $5,500,000 from the voted Recreation and Parks Bond Fund and declare an emergency. Man, Director McKnight, please indulge us on what's going on in Westgate.
President Ginther, Chairman Klein, members of council. This is the renovation of Westgate Recreation Center as we've been going through and improving these facilities. That center was built in the late '50s and has not had any major renovations since it was originally built. In addition to the renovations to the center, adding air conditioning, replacing the heating system, as we've been doing, we're also putting an addition on the building, somewhat similar to what we did Whetstone Recreation Center about six years ago, to create some additional programming space for gymnastics and dance, those types of programs. So it's a continuation of the renovation of the facilities, and we look forward to seeing these improvements and expanding the programs at Westgate.
Can you maybe touch upon the expansion that's going to take place there?
Expansion is to the, get my bearings here, to the south. And it'll be a, basically one large multipurpose room with high ceilings. Right now, we have the gymnasium that's obviously used for court games, hardwood floors and the bleachers. And then we also have a multipurpose room that is used for performances and meetings. This will be a room that we can set up gymnastics equipment. This will be a room that we can set up gymnastics equipment or do wrestling programs, dance classes, those types of activities, and it, Westgate's a very heavily programmed center, a very active center, and we use every square inch of that space today, and this allows to continue to grow and serve that community on the west side.
Thank you, Director McKnight. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Peely, Tyson, President Ginther.
Final piece is 1542 2013, to authorize the appropriation of $1,125,855 within the Rocky Fork Tax Increment Financing Fund to authorize and direct the city auditor to transfer cash totaling $1,125,855 from the Rocky Fork Tax Increment Financing Fund to the Recreation and Parks Permanent Improvement Fund to provide funding for parkland acquisition to authorize the appropriation of $1,125,855 within the Recreation and Parks Permanent Improvement Fund and to declare an emergency. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Peely, Tyson, President Ginther.
And that wraps up Recreation and Parks. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. Our next committee is the Technology Committee. President Pro Tem Miller chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. In the Technology Committee tonight, we have two items. 1192 2013, to authorize the Director of Department of Technology to renew an agreement with Secure Works Incorporated to provide managed technology security services in order to continue compliance with federal and state regulatory requirements; to authorize the Director of Department of Technology to enter into an agreement with Secure Works Incorporated for monitored firewall standalone technology security services; to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code; to authorize the expenditure of $179,132.50 from the Department of Technology Information Services Fund, Internal Services Fund, and to declare an emergency. And the reason for waiving competitive bidding is that it will actually be a huge significant startup cost if we would switch vendors at this point in time. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Peely, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next is 1193 2013, to authorize the Director of Department of Technology to renew an agreement for the second year of the three-year agreement with Information Builders Incorporated to purchase software maintenance and support to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code to authorize the expenditure of $29,810.57 from the Department of Technology Information Services Division, Internal Services Fund, and to declare an emergency. And this is just an extension of the second year of a three-year contract, and that is the reason for waiving competitive bidding. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Peely, Tyson, President Ginther.
And that is all we have in the Technology Committee tonight. President Council, Ginther.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Miller. Our next committee is the Public Safety and Judiciary Committee. Councilmember Mills chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. Tonight in Public Safety and Judiciary have the following ordinances, beginning with Ordinance 1454-2013, to authorize and direct the City of Columbus Director of Finance and Management to enter into a contract with Vance's Law Enforcement for Ballistic Body Armor and Helmets to authorize expenditure of $111,679.88 from the General Fund to waive the provisions of competitive bidding and to declare an emergency. The ballistic vests, rifle-rated ballistic plates, and tactical helmets used by the Division of Police's SWAT unit as well as the Intact Unit's ballistic equipment are in need of replacement for the safety of our officers. The Division of Police is requesting a bid waiver that I support because the items that the division is seeking to replace, the tactical body armor and ballistic helmets have been discontinued and are not on the current uniform contract. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Peely, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, have Ordinance 1544-2013, to authorize and direct the city attorney to settle the case of Patrick W. Jones versus the City of Columbus Department of Technology pending before the United States District Court, Southern District, Eastern Division, and related union grievances in the amount of $150,000 and to declare an emergency. I would ask that City Attorney Pfeiffer would add some additional comments related to this ordinance. City Attorney Pfeiffer?
President Ginther, Chair Mills, members of council, thank you. This is an employment relations matter that comes out of the Department of Technology. It involves an employee who is no longer an employee named Patrick Jones. It seems that in 2011 disputes arose between the department's managers and Mr. Jones that arose to the point where the department moved to discipline him by suspending him and ultimately terminating him. That was grieved by his union. After the grieving process begun, Mr. Jones also filed a lawsuit in the federal district court alleging that he was disciplined because of his race. During the discovery period on the arbitration, because the matter went to arbitration, on the grievance matter, our attorneys determined that, one, we could defeat the federal case based on race, but based upon the evidence that was coming out in the arbitration, it appeared to our attorneys that most likely this employee was going to be ordered to return to employment. With back pay and other benefits, he would be entitled to $113,000. So you say, well, if you're going to have him come back, pay him $113,000. The department does not want Mr. Jones to come back. So in the discussions with Mr. Jones' attorney, it was agreed that for $150,000, he would dismiss all actions against us with prejudice, and he would not come back to employment, which he does not want to come back to now, and the department agrees with this, and Mr. Kavanaugh of the department agrees with the resolution, and I would ask this council to pass this ordinance. Thank you.
And offer, are there any comments or questions from my fellow council members? If there are none, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Peely, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next have Ordinance 1559-2013, to authorize the Franklin County Municipal Court Judges, duty administrative and presiding judge, to contract with Alvis House to provide a work release program as an alternative for incarceration which is consistent with public safety to authorize the expenditure up to an amount not to exceed $200,000 from the court's governmental grant fund and to declare an emergency. If there are no comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Peely, Tyson, President Ginther.
That's all I have in way of legislation, President Ginther, but I do have one comment I'd like to add. I'd ask that our great citizens share with me in taking a moment to honor the brave men of Prescott, Arizona, the elite team of firefighters known as the Granite Mountain Hot Shots. That community lost some heroes, 19 firefighters, a devastation to all, and I would ask that send out prayers and sentiments to their families and loved ones and the rest of the fire department, and as I always do, ask everyone to thank a safety officer and thank them for their service. My heart and prayers go out to those families of those lost firefighters. It's a devastation when any of our first responders are in harm's way and suffer the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. At this point, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn regular meeting number 38, recess regular meeting number 38, and we will reconvene at 6:30 for regular meeting number 39 zoning. So move. Is there a second? Clerk Caldwell will.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Peely, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. We reconvene at 6:30 for zoning. Clerk Caldwell will.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Peely, Tyson, President Ginther.
Are there any communications and reports received by the cert. clerk?
No, there are not.
Any first readings of 30-day legislation?
No, there are not.
We will now go to the zoning committee. President Pro Tem Miller chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. In zoning tonight, we have 1384 2013 to rezone 1717 Northwest Boulevard being .27 plus and minus acres located on the southwest side of Northwest Boulevard, 95 plus and minus feet southeast of Chambers Road from R. Rural District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Worldwide Investment LLC. The proposed use is commercial development. It receives a Development Commission recommendation for approval, the Fifth by Northwest Area Commission recommendation for approval, and finally, the City Department recommendation for approval. And I have no speaker slips. If there's no questions or comments, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Peely, President Ginther.
1420 2013, to rezone 116 East Mueller Street being .28 plus and minus acres located on the northwest corner of East Mueller Street and South Fourth Street from L.A.R. 3, limited apartment residential district to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Terrick Youssef. Proposed use is a multi-unit residential and retail development. It receives the Columbus South Side Area Commission recommendation for approval, the Development Commission recommendation for approval, and lastly, the City Department recommendation for approval. I have no speaker slips. If there are no questions or comments, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Peely, Tyson, President Ginther.
1448 2013, to rezone 1376 King Avenue being .7 plus and minus acres located at northeast corner of King and Granville Avenues from C4 Commercial District to AR2 Apartment Residential District. The applicant is 1374 King Avenue LLC. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. It receives the Development Commission recommendation for approval, the Fifth by Northwest Area Commission recommendation for approval, and finally, the City Department recommendation for approval. If there are no questions or comments, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Peely, Tyson, President Ginther.
And last is 1449 2013, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3312.21A, Landscaping and Screening 3333.18, Building Lines, and 3333.24, Rear Yard of the Columbus City Code for the property located at 1376 King Avenue, to permit reduced development standards in the AR2 Apartment Residential District for a 24-unit apartment building. The applicant is 1374 King Avenue LLC. The proposed use is a 24-unit apartment building. It receives a Fifth by Northwest Area Commission recommendation for approval, and finally, the City Department recommendation for approval. And I have no speaker slips. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Peely, Tyson, President Ginther.
And that is all we have in zoning tonight. President Ginther.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nothing else to come before the zoning committee, entertain a motion to adjourn? So move. Is there a second? Clerk Caldwell will.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Peely, Tyson, President Ginther.
Regular meeting number 39, zoning committee is adjourned. Ask for a motion to reconvene, regular meeting number 38? So move. Is there a second? Clerk Caldwell will.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Peely, Tyson, President Ginther.
Regular meeting number 38, we are reconvened. Councilmember Mills, I believe that you have a code change in the Rules and Reference Committee, actually, two code changes, and I'd ask for you to take us to those.
Thank you, President Ginther. Tonight in Rules and Reference have the following ordinances, beginning with Ordinance 1548-2013, to modernize city regulations pertaining to vehicles for hire through enactment of new chapters 585, 587, 589, 591, 593, and 594 of the Columbus City Code and to repeal the existing versions of chapters 585, 587, 589, 591, 593, and 594 of the Columbus City Code. To give some background and history in relation to the vehicle for hire code changes, beginning in April 2012, this city council, in concert with the mayor's administration, initiated an effort to modernize the entire vehicle for hire code change. The code has not been substantially changed since 1988. The primary goals of this effort were to increase the public safety, improve our customer's experience, and support the progress of Columbus Vehicle for Hire Tourism and Hospitality Industries. The Vehicle for Hire Board currently consists of representatives from the city, vehicle for hire owners and drivers, the Chamber of Commerce, the Airport Authority, the Convention or Visitors Bureau, and private citizens. The changes to rules and regulations focus on improving the standards, including, among others, an eight-year age limit for vehicles, prohibiting smoking in vehicles at all times, dress codes for drivers, restricting license transfers from one vehicle to another based on vehicle condition. The Vehicle for Hire Board was also consulted regarding the proposed code change over several months in 2012 at a special meeting of the board on January 9, 2013. Additionally, representatives from city council, the Department of Public Safety, and the city attorney's office met with the committee representing independent taxi cab owners on January 16, 2013, and at subsequent times following to discuss the changes and to further listen to all concerns. In response to the input received at these numerous meetings, several compromises were reached and further changes were made to the proposed code. That then-proposed code was presented at a public hearing held by city council on January 30, 2013. The vehicle for hire industry is an interco transportation option in Columbus. As tourism increases in our great city, it becomes more nationally recognized and a visitor destination. We need the help with the vehicle for hire industry to make progress that reflects and contributes to the growth and economic activity in our city. This ordinance will help our vehicle for hire industry make changes that will be beneficial to its members as well as their customers. It will certainly continue to facilitate the continued industry standards and best practice focused on modernizing our fleet, protecting passengers, and also protecting the drivers and promoting the industry. Taxi cab drivers are often the city's first ambassadors to our visitors. We want to ensure that our visitors have a safe and great first impression and remember our city as being progressive and vibrant. Following the consideration of this legislation, city council and public safety will continue to work on some outstanding matters as were discussed not only in the meetings but as well as in our public hearing. We will continue to work on some of these matters that require additional research and further discussion. I have several speakers related to this ordinance. I will start with Michael Brown, who is here to speak on this ordinance. Mr. Brown, if you'll please approach the podium, please share your name, any organizations that you represent, and you have three minutes to share your four comments related to Ordinance 1548 2013. Thank you.
Councilmember Mills, members of council, President Ginther, City Attorney Pfeiffer, thank you guys for hearing this legislation tonight. Michael S. Brown, I live in the Harrison West neighborhood, and I work for Experienced Columbus, but I also am a member of the Vehicle for Hire Board that helped work with the team in the Public Safety Department and on all those public hearings to get this draft ready and to really go into the details on all the different parts, and we think it's very important, representing the visitor industry here in town, we work as a board and Experienced Columbus to make sure that that visitor has an amazing experience every time. We want to make it easy for people to love coming to Columbus so they come back. As you know, this is about 9% of our local economy being affected by visitors, travel and tourism, and those cabs are really important. And I mentioned Harrison West before because, living so close to downtown, cabs are often my weekly choice. I park my car once if I can and get around the city either in our cabs or petty cabs I've started using too, and it's great. We have a great system, we have great drivers, and as you know, the drivers are represented on the commission as well with businesses. And so I believe that they've put together a good plan that will modernize the cars on the street. That's an important first step. Also making sure that there's safe insurance rates. We want to make sure that people are protected in any situation, but it's all about making that service better and making it so that everybody has that quality experience. We're also looking at some technology tools so that there's a credit card reader in the back of every car so people have that confidence to know that maybe they don't have any cash, they can still get that ride and pay for it safely. These are really important upgrades and a modernization of the system, and I think it's a very beneficial process that we've gone through. Spending a year on this was important, and we all learned a lot. I was by no means any expert on cabs when we started this process, and I feel much better educated now as to the needs of the industry, and we have a much better working relationship also between the commission, the owners of the cab companies, some of the independent cab companies. We all are talking more now because we've shared through this experience of... We all are talking more now because we've shared through this experience of how we can best work together to make sure also that these small businesses can grow. These are businesses in town, we want them to be successful as well, but first and foremost from our industry, we want that visitor to be happy so they'll come back many times. So thank you for the opportunity to speak in favor of this legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, and I'm sure you hear in your work at Experience Columbus, the decision to come back to our city is based on some of those impressions that the deciders or event planners, when they arrive to our city, they start examining from the moment they land at the airport what our city has to offer, and I'm sure that if the taxicab experience was different, you would hear about it before you even began to engage with them about bringing their convention or their annual gathering to the city of Columbus.
Yeah, last year, we worked with some 600 groups to help plan their event here in our city, and whether it's the Arnold Classic, bringing in almost 200,000 people, or a family reunion, it's all the same to us. They're our customers, they're our friends, and we want them to come back as often as possible. And those touch points, your airport, the cabs, the buses, the hotels, the convention center, even the arenas and the coast side and the zoo, these are places that so many of those visitors see often for the first time. We never want to make a negative impression on that so it's their last time.
Thank you for coming to council, I appreciate it. Our next speaker is Ronald Glent, and I believe, Mr. Glent, you are against this legislation. If you'll please present yourself to the podium. Again, share your name and any organizations that you may represent. You have three minutes to share your comments.
I represent Independent Taxicab Owners Committee. My name's Ronald Flint. No problem. And I apologize for being emotional from the beginning. Yes, honorable members, we are totally against those ordinances. We consider them very humiliating and disruptive to the taxicab industry, especially, I'll try, I don't have too much time, but I'll try to cover as many points as I can. The first thing I want to talk about is credit card issue. Personally, I don't take credit cards, period. I don't take anything what has to do with the interest, but it's me. Lot of 99.9% of taxicab drivers do take credit cards, and city insists on the machine in the back of the seat. Why? People use square. Machine is all technology, five years old. Square is more comfortable and convenient for both sides. So why use promote all technology and plus it costs us money? We're the ones who are going to pay for it, and we don't support that. People, city would argue, okay, customers are not comfortable giving to you the credit card. They are not. When they go to the restaurant and give the same credit card to the waiter, are they comfortable? So how come they're not comfortable giving to us? Waiter can take a credit card and disappear through the back door. Cab driver is not running nowhere from the cab. That's what I was trying to pay attention to. Another thing I would like to talk about, power in one person's hands. They want to take the power from the board and to give it to one person, to director. He decide our death or whether we leave or we die, and often he doesn't even know nothing about taxicab industry. We have people representing us over there as a board. We trust the board. Hypothetically speaking, one person could be easily corrupted, can't he? He can be affected, or he can be prejudiced. Board, 15 people, 13 people, can't. We're not comfortable with this change at all whatsoever. The other issue I would like to talk about, they want, the city wants, without any reason rhyme, to take our professional taxicab license for us. People go to school for one month, three months, get professional CD license and drive CD trucks. To get us professional license takes five years of driving for no good reason, give it to us. Why? We didn't deserve that. Ladies and gentlemen, please, I urge you, don't vote for something which is basically evil and discriminating and humiliating to us. Consider, you hear the voice of the industry, all of we came here to express that we are not happy with it. It's very insulting and humiliating to us. Thank you. And one more time, I'm sorry for being emotional. It concerns me.
I ask that, I want to first say thank you for your comments, and I want to also share with you and others that over the year, there is, there has been quite an attempt to reach compromises related to many of the issues that you raised along the way with the meetings and the stakeholders, and these are the compromises that you'll see here in the proposed legislation. Thank you, Mr. Flint, for your comments.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mohammed H. Noor. Again, let me apologize if I've mispronounced your name. Mr. Noor, if you'll please approach the podium, I believe you have signed up against this legislation. You have three minutes of which to share your comments related to ordinance 1548-2013.
Good evening, President Ginther, Councilwoman Michelle Mills, and all council members. I just want to, you know, I'm a member of, you know, the board representing, and as you mentioned, there's been a lot of negotiations we had through the years, and we really appreciate the help of the city, you know, making compromises, but however, some of those rules, they're going to be a financial hardship on us, and we don't have that much business. Basically, you know, if you go to the airport, there's like 100 cabs, 150 cabs sitting there waiting three, four hours to get one fare. So we are willing to modernize, but you know, like you said, the credit card, we cannot have a credit card machine at the back. We need to have at least square, and majority of us, we do take credit card. Just, that's all I wanted to mention. You know, we need to just let you know, this, all this is not going to be easy, it's going to cost us a lot of money, and we are willing to work with you guys. Thank you.
And Mr. Noor, I again appreciate. I would ask that you observe the rules of council. Mr. Noor, I am asking to share with you that we will continue discussion related on some of the other issues, and that, again, not making any substantial changes to this code since 1988. We needed to make some changes, and we'll continue to keep the dialogue open as we move forward and other discussions, as we have to arrive here at the compromises that are in front of my fellow council members as the compromises on items that we needed to make. Again, not making any substantial changes to how the board is consistent or the changes since 1988. It requires us to continue to move in a progressive direction in the best interests of our great city. I appreciate your comments this evening. Next, we have, I'm going to apologize for mispronouncing the name, Gabrinian Kiflum, who is against and offering comments against ordinance 1548. If you would please approach the podium and please state your name correctly and share with me the correct pronunciation, and you have three minutes to speak in regards to ordinance 1548.
Thank you. I apologize in advance if I mispronounce your name and if you mispronounce my name, I will forgive you already, so. My name is Gabrinian Kiflum, 423 Grandland Park Drive, Blacklake, Ohio. I've been in Columbus 29, 28, 29 years, and from those years, I am a taxi driver for 20 years. We are always for modernization, but when we say modernization, what happened to the old rules and codes? If they does the purpose, why do we need to change them for the sake of modernization? If we see verse by verse, almost is identical, except some change. And always, when we make a change, we have, we don't have to rush. We have to study it, digest it, because we're going to live for a long time with this legislation. We are not going to change it next year, in two years or three years. It's going to be with us for a long time, so we don't need to be rushed. All the attitude and the communication with the people, they draft these codes, they just want to pass the legislation as soon as possible. So we are objecting to this. We have to study them, we have to digest them, because we're going to live with them for a long time. So before we say yes or no, I request the chamber, the council, to study them and digest them very well. Thank you for listening. Thank you.
Sorry, my microphone's not on. Mr. Calvin, I appreciate you coming down, and I share your sentiments about studying the issue, and that is why today, July, is the chosen time to present this legislation after studying it over a year and presenting the proposed legislation in January and still waiting months later to make sure that we have had dialogue and engaged folks as much as possible before presenting the legislation for my colleagues to consider. I would also share with you that our thoughts are shared on taking time to study as it relates to other issues, the loose ends that we continue to plan to discuss, including license transfers and some other pieces that we continue to have discussion. So I appreciate your comments tonight and you coming down tonight. I hope this is not the last time that I'll hear from you and your comments as we move forward to discuss the other parts that we feel are necessary in continuing to address the taxicab industry and making sure it meets the progressive needs of our city. So I thank you again for coming down, and again, hope this is not the last opportunity that I'll have to hear from you related to the modernizing and the continued progressiveness of the industry. Thank you again.
Thank you. I hope not, so this is not going to be the last time I'll be back. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that is all of the speaker slips I have related to ordinance 1548. If there are no other comments or questions, Councilmember Klein.
Thank you, Chair. The one question that one of the speakers mentioned, I don't know if it's the best addressed to you, Chair Mills, or to the Associate, Assistant Director of Public Service, but the elimination of the Vehicle for Hire Board was one thing that the person mentioned, and I just want to get some clarification on whether that board is going to be eliminated and the power is going to be invested to the Director of Public Safety.
The board has not been eliminated, Councilmember Klein. I appreciate your question, and thank you for raising it so that I can educate the public if that was a miscommunication. The Vehicle for Hire Board has not been eliminated. Its composition has been changed to reflect representation of the taxicabs and allowing final vote to rest with the Director of Public Safety. Director speaks. Would you like to add any comments related to the Vehicle for Hire Board and its composition?
Chairman Mills, President Ginther, members of council. I would respectfully request Assistant Director Amanda Ford come forward. Amanda has shepherded this project for us for the last 15 months, and has done a wonderful She'll be able to answer this question as well as any other sort of request.
Good evening, councilmembers. Basically, the way the Vehicle for Hire Board is set up now, there's representation from the city, the industry. We added representation from Experience Columbus and also the pedicab industry. What he's referring to is when it comes to discipline, that authority has been taken away from the Vehicle for Hire Board. We found through many conversations, and just me personally setting through some of those meetings, that they were not comfortable discussing the issue of discipline as it related to a fellow member of the industry. You know, Ramona Patz, our administrator, who serves as the Chair of the Vehicle for Hire Board, tried to get them to communicate about what they felt was appropriate discipline. They always sided with the recommendation from the license section. They didn't appear to be comfortable making those decisions, so we brought it to the attention of the board and said, would you be more comfortable if the Director of Public Safety took on the discipline piece of this? So the reality is, they just lose that discipline piece, but they still have the authority to vote on all rules and regulations changes.
May I, Councilmember? So just so I'm clear, Ms. Ford, all of the original power vested with the board remains the same with the exception of discipline?
Yes.
And only, and can you just briefly just educate me how the disciplinary procedure works under this proposed change?
Well, the way it currently works right now is, if there's an issue, whether it's a drug charge, DUI, just something that would bring you in front of the board for discipline, they hold a hearing, so you have an opportunity to come in and kind of state your case in front of the board, and then they make a decision on what that discipline should be. So the way it will work now is instead of coming from, through the board, which could potentially take weeks, months, depending on when the issue happened, we can schedule an immediate hearing with the director within, you know, a week of the incident coming to the license section. So the turnaround will actually be a little bit quicker for them, so they don't have to wait for the next Vehicle for Hire Board meeting, but they'll basically come into a hearing with the director. The license section will be there to read the charges that are against them and give the director an opportunity to rule on what he feels is efficient discipline.
Councilmember Klein, I'd also like to add that that waiting period that Director Ford is responding to is also a time of lost earnings during that time, and we wanted to lessen the loss of earnings during that time regards to timing scheduling of the Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you, Chairwoman Mills. I just have a question in regards to the credit card. And I know that, first of all, I think that our taxicab drivers should take credit cards, and I certainly know that it is an inconvenience. I just came back from a major city, and it was very, very difficult for, I mean, a major city, that they didn't take credit cards, and it was just really a problem in terms of getting around in that city. So I'm for having credit cards, but also, once I did get credit cards, the ones that did use credit cards, they did use the square. And, you know, initially, you feel a little uncomfortable with the square because you don't know what's going to happen. But I would say that I've now traveled there a number of times using the square, and it has worked. I haven't had any, you know, but it's getting past the initial discomfort, and because there's, sometimes you have the cabs where you have it in the back and you see the receipt, and it comes out. And so I just want to, I'm just listening to the gentleman speak about this, and I know that this won't take effect until 2014, is that correct?
June of 2014.
So we have some time to continue to work on what's the best technology to use that may not, that may be cost-effective to be able to meet our needs and hopefully meet, you know, the needs of the taxicab industry.
Yes, and we'll continue to evaluate that. And we're just not at a point where we're completely comfortable with the square, just based on some experiences that we've personally had with it. So it is something that we said we would continue to evaluate, and that is one benefit of pushing that back to June of 2014 when it's mandatory, so it gives us time to continually just evaluate the technology. We realize it's constantly changing, you know, but we know as of right now, we're more comfortable with that credit card swipe in the back of the cab. You know, that's what we've talked about all along, so we'll continue to monitor it, and so we feel that there's still time if we want to change that, because it's not something they have to do immediately.
Thank you.
Councilmember Miller?
Yeah, I see Councilmember Tyson brought the same point about the credit card machines. I'm familiar with the square and that technology. I think my question is just leaning towards having an established credit card machine in there versus the square. I think it's, I think it's more reliable having the machine versus the square, because a square is using two different devices. That would be the smartphone, the tablet, and the square itself, which actually represents the possibility of losing one or the other. So with an established credit card machine, that's something that, just from me standing, sitting here, is my recommendation going forward as you look into that investigation.
And that's what we're more comfortable with at this point, too, because we feel like the square technology is just not quite there yet, so we want to continue to monitor that, and like I said, we all felt more comfortable just based on some of our own personal experiences with the square, that that was the safer route just for everybody in general.
Chairman Mills.
Councilmember Craig.
In that same line of reasoning, Assistant Director Ford, what are the financial implications of the, of the credit card? And what does that mean in terms of the taxicab drivers having to get the credit card machine in the back? What are the financial implication? Who acquires those? What are the, what's the process?
You know, I don't have an exact, I don't have an exact cost for what that's going to be for them to put those machines in the back. It's one of those things that we've talked about repeatedly. We realize that that is a cost that they will have to incur, but we will also, we've talked about doing somewhat of like a trade show with them to have some credit card companies come in and talk about how they can negotiate that fee that they have to pay and maybe negotiate the cost of the equipment that goes in the back of their cab, because we realize that's a cost to them, but it's such a convenient, the reality is, all of us use credit cards all the time. We rarely carry cash anymore, so we feel like the benefits will definitely, you know, outweigh that in the end, because if they take credit cards, that's more likely that somebody's going to take their cab.
But thank you. I needed to say also to Chairman Mills, I appreciate the time that's been invested. I know that you've been hearing this matter for a considerable period of time, and Assistant Director Ford, as you've continuing to hear from those that most affected. I mean, it's an economic impact for the I mean, it's an economic impact for the taxi drivers and certainly the overall implication for the city of Columbus and moving people to and fro to our city.
Well, thank you. And I will say, you know, one thing that we have done is we've committed to continue to work with the independents throughout all of this and we've sat down multiple times, we've listened to their concerns, we've talked them out, you know, several times. And I've committed to them that we'll continue to come back to them as we address other issues that will affect their industry.
I want to add a couple additional comments and I appreciate your comments, Councilmember Craig, related to the financial impact because also in the changes that I want to make sure that all are aware is that we've increased the maximum drop rate for passengers from $2.75 to $3. We did not make decisions in terms of financial impact without considering financial gain as well. We've also increased the maximum credit card fee for passengers from $0.50 to $1.50. We have been, again, sensitive to the financial impact and looking at the financial gain opportunities for the taxi cab industry as well. So, I want to make sure that that's part of it. And as we continue to move forward, discussions, I want to encourage everyone to stay a part of the discussion, be a part of the dialogue and hearing and other discussions that we have because we've tried to ensure that we have representation and voice from the independent taxi cab owners throughout this over a year-long process. And again, want to make sure that we talk about the financial gain opportunities that we've added as well as the financial implications of the changes that we make. We do feel very strongly, in sponsoring this legislation, I feel very strongly that the modernizing and the changes since 1988 have been a good compromise and open dialogue that will continue as we move forward to modernize and progressing the taxi cab industry. Thank you, Director Ford.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? If not, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Next, in Rules and Reference, I have a similarly related ordinance as it relates to pedicabs. I'd like to present ordinance 1549-2013 to amend Title V of the Columbus City Code by enacting new chapter 592 entitled "Pedicabs" to establish licensing requirements and regulations for pedicabs. Pedicabs are a new and growing form of for-hire transportation in Columbus and have previously not been regulated. In February of 2013, the city began meeting with local pedicab owners to discuss creating a new chapter of our city code to regulate pedicabs. This is yet another sign of the progressive and growing of the great city of Columbus. In those following months, city representatives met with the pedicab owners as well as my office to gain a better understanding of the daily operations of pedicab owners and drivers. We worked with the industry to devise a safe, fair, and supportive regulations that are also consistent with the city's overarching requirements for the entire vehicle-for-hire industry. The new pedicab code establishes licensing requirements and vehicle standards, including turn signals, reflective signage, and a unibody frame to ensure the safety of passengers and drivers. This legislation, as well as the taxi cab legislation, considers consumer protections, overall citizen protection, and the support of businesses in our community. Additionally, pedicabs will be required to post a sign informing riders of the city's helmet laws as they apply to minors. Pedicabs are an emerging industry with the vested interest in ensuring that the public has a safe, successful experience that reflects well on the industry as a whole. I have several speakers related to this legislation and I will begin with Habate Aquazagi. I apologize if I've mispronounced your name. I believe the speaker slip reflects speaking against 1549-2013. If you'll please approach the podium. I'm sorry, it states 1549 on the speaker slip. I assume you will forego your comments this evening related to 1549?
I will not.
Okay. I will move to our next speaker, Kristin March, who has signed to speak for ordinance 1549. Ms. March, if you will please approach the podium, restate your name and any organizations that you represent. You have three minutes to share your comments for ordinance 1549.
Hi, I just wanted to, my name is Kristin March and we have an independent pedicab company right now that's only, doesn't have an official name yet, but we are a voice amongst the pedicabs here. We've traveled all over and we came from some other cities where the regulations did already go into effect. So, we know the ups and downs and the problems that have been associated with some of that. So, we're grateful that it's happening here overall. My one concern that did come up, and I didn't realize this, as the code was being created, that the owner laws that regulate the owners are not as stringent as the rider laws, which right now, the riders are the owners for the most part. So, the pedicabbers and the issues that did make this regulations start to be pushed from the Short North Civic Association, those people are now allowed to be owners, but they're not going to be allowed to be riders. So, now what's happening is the owners are buying up cabs and then they're going to be training other people to be riders. So, I don't know what that means for passage. That may make you guys want to think twice about, maybe we should amend this more and I don't know if it can be amended in the future. But the issues that we found with that from other cities are if a person that has questionable morals is then allowed to have a bunch of people that work for him out on the street, that kind of creates a whole slew of problems because then he's training those people, he's going to be asking them for a lease that's going to be higher than what they may be able to pay based on what they've made out there. So, the only issue we've seen with that is that people start ripping, like they start overcharging people on the street and so then that kind of ruins the industry for us because then local people might not want to ride with us anymore. They may have had a bad experience. So, I'm just urging you to maybe reconsider or whatever needs to happen that the owners also have to have as a stringent regulations and restrictions as the rider does. But overall, I think that it's going to be a good thing for the city and for the industry. So, hopefully, I wasn't too long-winded. I apologize, I'm very nervous. That's all I have to say.
Ms. March, I want to thank you for coming to council and sharing your comments and I also want to respond to some of the issues that you raised. The fare issue was one of those situations where we have to continue discussion related to the fares. The scenario you presented about rider versus driver and those changes, I'm not sure that I clearly understand your question related to that, but I am certainly willing to continue the discussion with you related to that issue and listen to you additionally. And if you feel, please contact my office so that I can understand your question better and maybe help you understand what's in this current code that we're proposing this evening that may or may not prevent the situation that you described from being exacerbated.
Yeah, my concern was, is that, do you want me to address that now or is that just something?
That's okay. I sent you follow-up to my office. Thank you, Ms. March. I appreciate your comments. The next speaker I have is Jason Bundo, who has signed up to speak for ordinance 1549-2013. If you'll please restate your name and possibly pronounce it correctly. I appreciate it and please share any organizations that you're here representing. Thank you.
It's Jason Bendo and I represent UCT Pedicab. I'm just one of a number of pedicab drivers in the city. I was, my partner and I started it pretty much back in 2008, so I've been there pretty much every step of the way to see us grow. There are a lot of great drivers in this city. This entire thing, what I'm most proud of is that you all see us as an asset to the community. So, I'm speaking here on behalf of UCT and as a resident of Columbus. I really just wanted to take the moment to thank everyone involved in helping us grow. I feel that we've come a long way and I'm very proud to be putting our big-boy pants on and to have been part of this entire thing, working with Amanda and working with you all. I just think it's, I think it's great and I'm just here to offer my thanks.
Thank you very much and I again, hope that we continue to dialogue as we approach this new industry that's new and growing and we find ourselves needing to address it. And I'm glad that this regulation will say to potential customers, it's a safe and regulated industry and many more will make use of the services. So, thank you for coming down and thank you for your participation.
Thank you. Thank you all.
I would like to offer now for any comments or questions from councilmembers. If there are none, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
That's all I have this evening in Rules and Reference.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. Our next committee is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. Councilmember Paley chairs that committee. Madam Chair, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther, on Public Service and Transportation this evening. We have ordinance 1267-2013 to amend the 2013 capital improvement budget to authorize the city auditor to transfer cash in appropriation within the Streets and Highway Bonds Fund and to authorize the Finance and Management Director to establish purchase orders with multiple vendors for the purchase of commodities, supplies, and materials for school flashers, payment markings, longitudinal channelizers, traffic sign upgrades, and traffic signal equipment per the terms and conditions of an existing citywide universal term contract or informal formal bidding for the Division of Planning and Operations and to authorize the expenditure of $1,152,222 from the Street and Highway Geo Bonds Fund for the purpose and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance 1334-2013 to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into necessary agreement with the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency and to accept and expend grant funding for the recycling on High Pilot Project and to modify the collection services of Yard Waste and Recyclables Contract with Ronke of Ohio Incorporated to add collection of recycling containers in the recycling on High program and to increase the contract by $8,000. Authorize the city auditor to appropriate $37,500 from the General Government Grant Fund and to declare an emergency. Through the Mayor's Office of Environmental Stewardship, the city of Columbus applied for and has been awarded a special assistance grant from the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency. In partnership with the Short North Alliance, the Mayor's Office of Environmental Stewardship, the Department of Public Service, and the Capital Crossroads CID proposed a bar and restaurant recycling pilot program. The program will be piloted in up to 40 Columbus bars and restaurants that face High Street between Broad Street and Lane Avenue. The city will reach out to bar and restaurant owners to educate them about the importance of recycling for Ohio's economy, offer them recycling containers, employee training, materials to communicate their efforts to customers, containers for the curb and pay for the hauling at the curb via Columbus contract for pedestrian recycling along High Street. The materials being targeted are glass bottles and aluminum cans. For the 40 restaurants and bars, it is expected that 1,500 tons of material will be diverted from the landfills between now and March of next year. This is in line with SCA's Solid Waste Management Plan, which calls for increased education and awareness of recycling and landfill avoidance at special community events. I would like to thank the City Environmental Steward Erin Miller, Public Service Director Kelsey and his team, the Short North Alliance, and Capital Crossroads for helping Columbus become a cleaner, healthier, and greener city. I urge your support for this ordinance. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance 1337-2013 to amend the 2013 capital improvements budget to authorize the city auditor to transfer cash in appropriation between projects within the Street Highway Bond Fund and to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a contract with Decker Construction Company and to provide for the payment of construction, administration, and inspection services in connection with the UIRF Taylor Avenue Project and to authorize the expenditure of up to $676,095.49 from the Street and Highway Bonds Fund and to declare an emergency. Are there any questions or comments? If not, I move to remove from the table.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
And move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, we have 1406-2013 to amend the capital improvement budget to authorize the city auditor to transfer cash in appropriation within the Street and Highway Bonds Fund and to authorize the Director of Public Service to establish a purchase order with the Solid Waste Authority of Central Ohio for landfill use by the Division of Planning and Operations and to authorize the expenditure of $35,000 or so much thereof as may be needed from the Street Construction Maintenance and Repair Fund and to authorize the expenditure from the Street and Highway Bond Fund in the amount of $230,000 to waive the competitive bidding requirements of the Columbus City Code 1959 and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage by voice vote.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Paley?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Ginther?
Next, we have ordinance 1530-2013 to amend the 2013 capital improvement budget to authorize the city auditor to cancel an existing auditor certificate, to authorize the city auditor to transfer cash between projects within the same fund and to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a contract with George J. Igall and Company and to provide for the payment of construction administration and inspection services in connection with the intersection improvements Livingston Avenue Project to authorize the expenditure of $710,202.85 from Fund 704 Street and Highway Geo Bonds Fund and to authorize the expenditure of $253,593.54 from Fund 735 Northland and other acquisitions and to declare an emergency. This project was started some time ago when Councilmember Craig was actually the Chairman of Public Service and Transportation and therefore is a co-sponsor on this ordinance. Councilmember Craig, would you like to comment?
Thank you very much, Chair Paley, for your leadership in shepherding through this important infrastructure initiative to support the Livingston Avenue Landscape Project. Tonight's ordinance, and thank you for stating that, emanated from a previous amendment I proposed in our capital improvements budget. The Livingston Avenue Project consists of Livingston Avenue Landscape improvements from Ohio to Wilson and Crosswalks improvements at the intersections of Livingston and Kelton and Livingston at Fairwood. This ordinance furthers the administration and city council's commitment to important infrastructure improvements essential to the quality of life for children and families in the Livingston Avenue corridor. And I urge council to support this ordinance. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Councilmember Craig. Are there any other comments? If not, I move for passage by voice vote.
Second.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Mills?
Of staying.
Paley?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Ginther?
Yes.
That's all we have in Public Service and Transportation this evening. May I move on to Public Utilities?
Please.
In Public Utilities, we have ordinance 1392-2013 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Complete General Construction Company for the Cherry Street, Forest Street inflow redirection and Town Street, Fourth inflow redirection projects and to authorize the transfer of funds within the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Fund and to authorize the expenditure of $2,773.6.80. Amend the 2013 capital improvement budget and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
That's all I have in Public Utilities. However, I would like to make a comment that June marks the one-year anniversary of the city's recycling program and the evidence shows that- and the evidence shows that the residents are embracing it in a big way. From June of last year to May of 2013, Columbus residents recycled more than 22,000 tons of material that has saved landfill space and $1.24 million in landfill disposal fees. To help the city improvement program, residents are invited to take an online survey at recyclecolumbus.org, where you are also able to purchase a second cart for $40, which includes home delivery, as well as learn more about collection days and what to put in your cart. In recognition of the success of its recycling program, Columbus was named Green City of the Year in March at a ceremony in Chicago. Thank you, President Ginter.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. I think Councilmember Tyson has an announcement?
Yes. Thank you, President Ginter. I am excited to announce a pilot program for our nonprofit organizations. This year in our budget, the mayor and myself, we have started a $300,000 pilot program based on feedback from our local nonprofit leaders, research of some of our best practices, and analysis of Columbus's underserved needs. We are pleased to announce a 12-month pilot program to fund working poor and former offender reentry programming. The application and more information is available at Application should be received by July 29 of 2013, or you can call Michael J. Puckett. His phone number is (614) 645-3219. And the deadline, again, is July the 29th. Also, I just want to announce to the viewing and listening public that the Millage Committee for the Columbus City Schools is having its public forum on the 9th of July at 270 East State Street, which is a Board of Education in the Assembly Room. So, if you want to give any feedback based, any feedback on the millage amount for the Columbus Public Schools, please come out to the evening event on the 9th of July. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Is there anything else to come before council this evening? Entertain a motion to adjourn. We do have several non-agenda speakers.
So moved.
Sir, second? Clerk Callahan?
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Stand adjourned. We'll take non-